Paulding County has an abundance of creeks and streams. How do we know if these streams are clean? We met with Eric Eberle, Paulding County Water Systems Environmental Specialist and Adopt a Stream Coordinator to learn about the Volunteer Water Quality Monitoring Program.
Here we are located in Paulding County. We actually have three major watersheds in Paulding County. The Talapusa River starts in Paulding County. To the north, you have the Etowah River system that will flow into the Cusa. The southeast region has Chattahoochee. Adopt a Stream is a statewide program. It enables citizen scientists to be able to go out and check the quality of the stream. It could be your backyard stream. It could be something as beautiful as High Shores Falls that we're at today.
The program does more than just monitor the quality of our waterways.
You can also do a stream cleanup, which will be a community event where we can actually get a team of people to come out and help you, and we'll all volunteer. We usually get probably a couple of truckloads out of the creeks. We get tires and all kinds of trash and just helps improve the habitat in your local streams.
Eric showed us some of the testing that can be done by citizen scientists to monitor the water quality. Types of monitoring include chemical, bacterial, macroinvertebrate, visual, and amphibian monitoring.
In order to get involved in the Adopt a Stream program, all you have to do is contact your local coordinator. All you have to do is you have to attend a monitoring workshop where you will be trained, and you'll actually take a test to be QA QC certified. And once you accomplish that, you'll be entered into the database, and you can be able to monitor as often as you like.
We hope that this will encourage citizens to sign up to monitor or improve sections of streams in Paulding County.
I highly recommend joining Paulding County Adopt a Streams program. They'll be able to help you keep tabs on your local creeks and keep the streams in our water system healthy and keep Paulding beautiful.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome. It's got 10 o'clock, and we're excited that you're joining us here today. It's a pleasure to welcome our hiring mayor, Mayor Moran. Thank you for being here. And Tommy, if you'll bring that list forward, please. I need to silence my phone. I don't know about you guys. This time, I will call the Paulding County Board of Commissioners' work session to order on this February night, the 9th, 2021. And our county attorney, Jason Phillips, is going to bring us our invocation and lead us in the pledge. Stand if you're able.
Dear Lord, we just come to you now, and once again, gathering is a body here to make decisions for the people of Paulding County. I ask that you would give these five commissioners wisdom on how to best do that and to do it in a way that's in accordance with your will. And Father, as we get ready to say the pledge here, Lord, we just want to remember that this is one nation under you as our sovereign father. We're one nation under God. And Father, in times like these, when we have a lot of questions in our mind, we're reminded that you'll bless this nation. And Lord, as we recite the words that "one nation under God, indivisible," remind us that we are one nation and that we should come together and seek common ground for the common good of the people of this country, and most importantly, the people of this county. And it's in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks so much for those words, Jason. The minutes from January 26, 2021, both work session and the board meeting minutes are available for review. The announcements come in the form of our Team Paulding video where we gave Employee of the Month to Katie Shipman. Let's watch together.
Katie began her employment with Paulding County Animal Control in October of 2014.
Holy crap. That's awesome.
She is our adoption rescue coordinator. Katie is the reason almost 500 animals left our shelter last year and went to various rescues. Katie also heads our TNVR Community Cat Program: Trap, Neuter, Vaccinate, and Release. This program began in May of 2018, and over 1,000 cats have been saved as a result. Katie applied for and was recently awarded a grant to help further expand the program.
Yeah, I just can't say enough about her. She's absolutely outstanding as an employee.
Katie works tirelessly to make sure the animals of Paulding County are given the best chance for a loving home.
All the lives that she save with rescues and adoptions, we would not be where we're at without Katie right now. So, we really, really appreciate her.
Thank you, Public Information Team, and congratulations, Katie Shipman. We have no invited guests this morning. Under bid awards, item number two is to award the purchase of the Mobile Command SWAT trailer to the lowest bidder. Millennium trailer sales in the amount of $62,267.11, Ms. Pollard.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I think Jeff's going to put us a picture up rather than giving a full description of the trailer, but this is a budgeted item. It's not listed as our, within our capital, but it is, it was included in the SWAT budget for 2021. So, we received three bids. Those bids ranged from $62,267.11 to $95,965, and we're recommending award to the low, to the low bid. This is a replacement trailer. And Colonel Hutton's with us if you have any questions.
Are we going to get Colonel Hutton's picture on the side of that?
No, sir.
We gave some good backup material. It'd be great to have that piece of equipment. So, thank you. What is that back, what's that on the back of that trailer?
Door. Which part, sir?
The gold thing.
I believe that's some type of antenna system. This is just a look-alike. This is not the exact trailer that we're getting. We're not going to have that on ours. But it was just to give you all an idea of what we're looking at, so. The SWAT truck that we currently operate out of, this year to be 18 years old, and the, the box on the back of it has gotten moisture in the walls, and we have tried to no avail to find somebody that can repair it and fix it. And the, the only option we could come up with was somebody starting from scratch because everybody's telling us that the, the chassis is so old on the truck that they don't have anything that'll fit it anymore. And when we, looking at the pricing to actually build something on, on that frame, it was going to cost almost just as much to replace it. So, and then hopefully, we won't have the same issue because we're getting ready to start another project at the new office with our canopy in the rear, in the back parking to help cover these items and protect them from the weather, so.
I know you'd never, probably need to fill it up, but how many SWAT members would usually travel in one of those?
In the truck, we can hold about maybe a dozen. This is going to kind of change things a little bit. We really wouldn't know in a transport in this trailer. But we also, we have what we call, we call it our assault van. We can fit 12 in it, and then with the truck that we're utilizing to pull this, we'll be able to fit at least five, maybe six in it. So, we'll be able to get most of the team members between the two vehicles if needed.
Thank you, Colonel Hutton.
Yes, sir.
We have no reports this morning from committees or departments. We have no one who's signed up for agenda items from the public. Consent agenda item, item number three, is to authorize the chairman to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the College and Career Academy cybersecurity as a partner. And the item number four is discuss action to adopt Resolution 21-03, adopting the Title VI Plan. That plan is an update for 2021 land, I'm sorry, 2021, and to authorize the chairman to sign the resolution. Those are the only two items on the consent agenda. Would any of the commissioners like to move any of those items to a regular business? Hearing none, we'll leave them on the consent. Their old business, we have none. Moving to new business, item number four, discuss action to approve the May 1st, 2021 Employee Benefits Plan renewal as presented. And Ms. Palmer and Ms. Ashley Goodlook are both here.
Good morning. How are you?
Good morning.
Our benefit plan continues to be an important recruitment and retention tool, and it's critical to our well-being of our employees and their families. It is my ongoing goal and obligation to the board and to the employees to maintain a comprehensive, competitive, yet cost-effective plan. The plan is, the following is an outline of the proposed benefit renewal for the plan year beginning May 1st, 2021. I appreciate the opportunity to present this information for your consideration and your review. Anthem renewal date is February, I mean, May 1st, 2021. There was a 9% increase, but the NFP team was able to negotiate a 0% increase. So, what this means to us is there is no changes to employee contributions, and there will be no plan change designs, no premium changes. Everything will just stay the same. There is a new benefit that we're going to be adding. It's ancillary coverage with Aflac. It's going to be voluntary, and it is employee-paid. It's going to be accident, critical illness, and hospital indemnity. Anthem Dental is guaranteed until May 1st, 2022. Our basic life, voluntary life, and short-term disability is a guaranteed rate until May 1st, 2023. Anthem rate for vision is also guaranteed until May 1st, 2024. NFP will continue to fund the entire cost of the Help Advocate Program. There will be no changes in our rate with our flex spending account through MedCom. I have reviewed the renewal with Chairman Carmichael, County Administrator Frank Baker, and Ms. Pollard, and I respectfully ask for your consideration to accept the May 1st, 2021, changes. Again, the benefit renewal is the same plan design, same carrier, no changes to employee contributions. If approved, open enrollment will be conducted in March for the May 1st effective date for 2021 till April the 30th. 2021 till April 30, 2022 plan. Please do not hesitate to come by our call if you have any questions. I thank you for your consideration. You got any questions?
Yes, ma'am. So when was the last time that we had a budget-neutral situation at the end of the year?
I'm sorry?
Y'all were able to negotiate the 9%. I said, when was the last time we had a budget-neutral?
I don't know if we've ever had that. This is the first time that we've had this information so quickly. This is a quick turnaround for NFP. This gives us more time to make a better decision. NFP's been a great team. They've done a great job getting this back to us so quickly. They did do a great job of comparing the markets, and they came back. So everything will just remain the same. So that'd be great for the employees. We're going to do the online enrollment again. It'll be through B-Swift like we did last year. We hope to have some in-person meetings, just, you know, depends on comfort level for people. But it was a great transition last year, and I think this year's going to be even better because we've worked with each other and we've got to, you know, we've got to know each other. So I think it'll be a great benefit for everybody involved.
Did the call center enhancement, did that, did that help your staff also?
Oh, absolutely. Oh, yeah. It took so much off our play because when employee calls, we can automatically direct them to NFP. So any questions they have, we've gotten great feedback from the employees that they respond quickly. NFP keeps us in the loop. I've reached out to employees. This is what I found out. I've contacted them. It's been a great adventure. I mean, it really has worked out well. They've taken a lot off of our office that we don't have to do. And employees have really embraced the online process. They've embraced calling into NFP, and so they're not, you know, they feel a little bit more empowered to make their own decisions through this process.
So there's a little bit more of an educational piece, then?
Definitely. There was an educational piece last year because we've never done online before. So that was totally new for us. So that went really well, and I think this year's going to be even better. NFP said they would come out there and do some in-person if we needed to, but hopefully we're going to do most everything through webinars, and then employees will just go online and make their changes if they want to, and then NFP just sends us that information, and we update it.
I'll tell you what, change is always hard, but I am so thankful how y'all stepped up to the plate. And like you say, it sounds like a good end product. Thank you.
It's a win-win for everybody. I'm really excited, and I think it'll be great.
Y'all also, Ed, and your team here locally, in conjunction with NFP, do some positive health training or, I mean, I saw some things on the website this morning.
Yeah. Well, we get our wellness grant through ACCG, and then also Blue Cross Blue Shield provides a wellness fund that we're able to provide training. All the masks that you guys have on, that come out of the wellness fund, so I was able to buy every employee a mask. I bought hand sanitizer. We've done educational pieces. We've had lunches. We have Lunch and Learn. That's a great tool that comes along with this plan as well. So we can educate our employees and just really make a difference in a lot of things that we do for them.
Any other comments, questions? Thanks so much, Ms. Palmer. New business, item number five, is discuss action to approve the application for a $600,000 Appalachian Regional Commission Grant for the Hiram State Route 92 Sewer Extension. Ms. Lori Ashmore to bring us the information.
I'm going to go ahead and bring up a map that we've got. What you see in front of you this morning is a real team effort involving the Environmental Health Department, the water system, finance, the city of Hiram, Paulding Economic Development, Prime Engineering, our design engineer, and the Northwest Georgia RDC in pulling all of this information together. We have, about five years ago, the city of Hiram constructed a downtown Hiram sewer system, a pump station in Force Main, to serve the downtown area. In the intervening years, we have become aware of failing septic tanks and issues with the ability to occupy some of the commercial properties in the area generally bounded by Hiram Sooty and Nebo Roads along State Route 92. As we were working on this, this was outside of our capital improvement program, and we started inquiring about potential sources of funding, I reached out to the Northwest Georgia RDC because we had had some previous conversations on other projects where grants were not possible, about if there were jobs involved, if there was economic development activity, we might be able to help you. And they were. They suggested that the Appalachian, that an Appalachian Regional Commission grant may be appropriate for a project such as this. We have, we engaged with Prime Engineering in 2020, developed a preliminary engineering report to develop sewer that will connect into that downtown Hiram system that was constructed by the city of Hiram, oh, and then dedicated to us. So it's a, it's a Paulding County system now. And so we looked at opportunities to serve that. The map that you see in front of you is the primary target area for this project, total of 83 acres that is made up of undeveloped properties. The library is located in this area. It extends down into that Cotton Gin area, and actually, we're able to serve a little further south than that as well. We have, in addition to that, there are another 65 acres to the northwest of the service area that could be connected and served through this area down to that pump station in the We have, the grant has been run through various reviews by Northwest Georgia RDC, and we present to you this morning the grant application package for funding of $600,000 of the $1.7 million project cost. We have, we are also doing preliminary work to position the county to possibly take advantage of a low or no interest rate loan available through Jifa because of the failing septic tanks. And so if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
I know you've worked hard on this, Lori, and we appreciate your team doing that. Can you, do you have any sense of the timeline when it'll actually be in? I know Mayor Moran and they'd like to have it in yesterday, but...
Well, and I don't like to answer those questions without facts in front of me because I've been known to misquote. Actually, we've got the schedule for this running through 2022. To be in service at the end of 2022.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
That's the conclusion of regular business. No one has signed up for non-agenda items. We don't have a requirement for executive session today. I will turn it over to County Administrator for a first announcement. Maybe you've noticed something about this room. I think that's what he wants to talk about.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you haven't noticed, those folks that are viewing on TV, we've had a little change in the panel up here. If you look at the front of the panel, it's been redone, and it looks really, really good. I just wanted to let everybody know that and also thank Rebecca, our clerk, Rebecca Meredith, for being the one that kind of got that going, and our fantastic folks in property management, Jimmy Remfro and his crew helped get it done, but it looks really, 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 really good, a very professional job. And so I just wanted to, I appreciate the opportunity to thank her publicly for what she did to steer that forward. Thank you, Rebecca.
And in our commissioner's comment, the closeout portion here, I'll just go first today, and if anybody else wants to follow me, it's fine. If not, that's fine also. I've been trying to track the vaccinations. I was over at Public Health a week before last with a nurse manager who's a really sharp professional lady, Ms. Nikki Ivy, and the day before I was there, they had done 578 vaccinations. Of course, there are other places around that can get vaccinated, but I think that's going well considering the limited number of vaccines that we've been able to acquire throughout the state and county by county. Anybody else have something on their mind today?
You guys, if you have not been to the Museum of Flight out at the airport, you need to go. I went a couple weeks ago, and the place is amazing. If you have kids, they will love it. So if you get a chance, drop by. It doesn't take that long to go through it, so just go look at it. It's pretty amazing. And it's right here in Paulding County.
Now, I just wanted to say something about Jody and the mayor being here today and just the leadership in Hiram and what they represent. Hiram, I'm proud of there because I've been from Hiram for 53 years, but I'm just thankful for what they bring to the table as far as for the county and the leadership that they
That is it for today. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn by Commissioner Stovers, or second? Second. Second, by Commissioner Dunn. All those in favor say aye. Aye. We stand adjourned.